Okay. It looks like it's seven o'clock, so we'll call this meeting to order. Welcome to the Troutdale City Council First Meeting of the Year, regular Tuesday, January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the City Council of the City of Troutdale. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Sarah, call the roll.
Counselor Allen?
Here.
Counselor One?
Present.
Counselor White?
Here.
Counselor Davidson?
Here.
Counselor Lamy?
Here.
Mayor Ripma?
Here.
Ray, is there an agenda update?
Yes, Mayor, we have an agenda update. We are switching item two and item three, so that item three will occur before item two. While we've always selected the council president before public comment, someone pointed out a lack of clarity in the charter and the code. And for convenience sake, go ahead, we'll make the change. However, it would, it's not really going to be relevant to public comment because the ordinances prohibit any comment during public comment on anything that's on the agenda. So we'll switch the order, but it shouldn't change what people do.
I understand.
Okay.
It, it is, we'll give it a try anyway. So we'll start off with public comment, which is to be on non-agenda items and consent agenda items. Public comment is welcome at this time. The public, any public comment on agenda items will be taken at the time the item is considered. Public comments should be directed to the presiding officer and limited to matters of community interest or related to matters which may or could come before the council. Each speaker shall be limited to five minutes for each agenda item unless a different amount of time is allowed by the presiding officer with consent of the council. The council and mayor should avoid immediate or protracted responses to citizen comments. So we, I think, have people out on Zoom, so let's start. Is there any public comment from our Zoom attendees? And I don't see any. Is there any public comment from anyone here present in the room? Not seeing any, we'll close public comment and move on to the election of the 2025 council president. And with that, I would entertain a motion to nominate one of the counselors to be council president. Carol?
I'd like to recommend Counselor Glenn White.
Okay, Glenn White. Any other nominations? Is there a second? I guess we should have a second. Is there a second to the nomination of Counselor White? Okay, moved and seconded. I would entertain a motion to close the nominations for council president unless there's anyone else. Is there a motion to close nominations?
Oh, I'll move to close.
All right, second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor of closing the nominations then? Signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The election of the council president, I wonder if we need to run through the election with only one candidate, but I suppose we should.
The, I believe it's the charter says there has to be a voice vote on everything.
Or, or a roll call vote, or excuse me. Or a roll call vote.
See, since I'm starting off on a spirit of public participation, I welcome public comment on, before we vote, we're about to vote, to confirm Counselor White as the council president. Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to make a public comment?
Mayor Ripma, Paul Wilcox.
Okay, yes, Paul.
Thank you. I also do appreciate your changing the sequence of the agenda items. That worked out for me. I do have a comment even though it won't change anything in the selection, obviously. Okay, here goes. I would remind council that in selecting a council president, it's not only someone who fills in when the mayor is occasionally absent, but because a mayoral vacancy must be filled by election, in the event, in the event of an extended absence by the mayor, the council president could be serving as the acting mayor for six months or longer. In nineteen ninety-three, a newly elected mayor resigned in the fourth month of his two-year term. At the time, the charter called for filling a mayoral vacancy the same as council vacancies are currently filled, appointed by the council. Prospect of a nearly two-year mayoral appointment was a controversial possibility. However, that was the only option under the nineteen forty-two charter. Of course, that appointed mayor went on to become a long-serving elected mayor. A change would have required a charter amendment, which would have had to proceed acting on the amendment. The issue raised enough interest and concern that the newly appointed mayor called for a full-fledged charter review, which did occur in nineteen ninety-four, resulting in the current charter, which of course changed the mayoral term from two to four years and calls for a mayoral vacancy to be filled by election, among other changes. It's noteworthy that those two changes in particular were controversial and that they were included in the new charter on a four-three council vote. The new charter, the voter's only option is all or nothing. Also, I'd also encourage, I'd encourage the council to review the council meeting minutes from that time, particularly April twenty-seven ninety-three and May twenty-fifth ninety-three. Current actions required. There are some real similarities to that period. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else in, participating on Zoom wishes to make public comment? Anyone in the council chambers? Yes.
Hello, I'm, I'm.
Please come up and introduce yourself.
Yeah, I'm David Whiteisbee, Glenn's older brother. And I just want to say the thought that you're considering him as council president blows my mind. I, I think you're up to a crazy endeavor here. But I know he's, he's grown and great, and I think you'd make a great president.
Well, thank you.
I'm not at all biased.
Of course, of course, naturally. For the record, please state your name and the city where you live. Who does it give you your address?
Officially, David Whiteisbee, and I am from Seattle, Washington.
All right, well, welcome, and thank you.
Thanks, brother.
Anyone else in council chambers?
Should you pay him?
All right, we have a motion and a second to elect Glenn White as council president. Let's just call the roll, yea or nay.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Yeah. Mayor Ripma?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Lamy?
Yes.
Counselor Allen?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Congratulations, Council President White. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. You vote first tonight, Counselor One, so would you please read the consent agenda?
Number four, consent agenda, four point one minutes, November twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, City Council Regular Meeting and Urban Renewal Agency Special Meeting. And December tenth, two thousand twenty-four, City Council Regular Meeting. Four point two, motion, a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five council meeting schedule.
And do I have a motion to adopt?
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Second?
I'll second it.
All right. I guess we're calling the roll on everything these days, so just go ahead and call.
Counselor One?
Yes.
Mayor Ripma?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Davis?
Yes.
Counselor Lamy?
Yes.
And Counselor Allen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Move on to a report on the federal copper and lead rules. Travis Holton and David Schaefer.
All right, well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, counselors, and I want to particularly congratulate Mayor Ripma, I've got to get used to that, on your new position and welcome the new councilors to the council and congratulate you as well. And for those of you that are already on the council, it's nice to see you again. Most of you know me, I am Travis Holton, the Public Works Director and Chief Engineer. With me today is David Schaefer, our Water and Streets and Equipment Maintenance Superintendent. We're going to be talking to you about a very, very exciting topic, lead and copper rules, something that I'm sure was just the very thing that you were hoping to talk about when you ran for the council. But really, this is important information for you all to know about. Really, the goal of this report is to keep you informed of these rules and what they mean for the city and to prepare you for answering questions or concerns from your constituents related to lead and Troutdale water as media attention on this issue has increased with the recent release of lead service line inventories and some updated rulemaking by the EPA. And of course, lead has been a big topic in the water industry and the news in the last few years with some of the unfortunate situations other cities have found themselves in, which we are not, I want to say, right off the top. So just to give you a little bit of background, this is not a new thing. Federal lead and copper rules have been around for quite a long time. They were first came around about nineteen ninety-one. They're not new, and they're not new to Troutdale. Like every other water utility, we've been monitoring for lead and copper in our customers' water for all of that time. These regulations come from the EPA. I mentioned earlier their federal rules, but they're implemented at the state level by our State Primacy Agency, which is the Oregon Health Department Drinking Water Division. The reason that lead and copper is important to monitor is that they can cause negative health effects in people. As detailed more further in my report, really, lead is the bigger concern. Copper can have negative health effects, but it has to be in more acute or doses or very prolonged exposure to elevated levels. But lead is not really, you know, lead can be harmful at much lower levels and is much more of a concern than copper, particularly for children, pregnant women, they're particularly vulnerable to these things. So it's very important that we monitor for these, these elements in our water and for all water utilities to do so. They're naturally occurring, I mean, we all know what lead and copper are, right? They're naturally occurring metals found all over the world. They're found underground. The, you know, it's possible for, for water sources, underground water sources, particularly even certain water, surface water sources to have small levels, small, very small amounts of lead or copper introduced into them naturally. But really, the main source of lead and copper in drinking water is plumbing systems because lead and copper have been used throughout the years as metals used to make plumbing components. Copper is still used to this day, and it's still used safely. Lead is not. Lead has been banned from plumbing fixtures and plumbing materials for quite some time. And that's really what this, a lot of this is about, is about the plumbing fixtures that take water from the city system into the home and then distribute it throughout the home. Really, we're not, the big concern isn't the water that we are delivering to the property. It's how it gets from that pipe to your, to your faucet, right? And the things that it can pick up along the way. David is going to hand out a little diagram that'll help this next little paragraph I want to go through just to help you understand sort of the basic anatomy of a water service lines. We talk about these things. So, you know, our water is distributed throughout the city by city mains. At that main, for each customer, there is what we call a tap. So when we hear the term tap, it might mean, in the context, it might mean people think of the tap like your faucet, but we also have a tap at the main where your water service connects to the main. And in older systems, the next piece coming off that tap would be what's called a gooseneck. These were typically made of lead or other malleable metals, but often lead back in the olden times because it was flexible. You could bend it into whatever shape you needed to get your water line lined up to where you needed it to go. And then you would take off from there with the service line, which carries the water to the house, through a meter. It's located in your meter box out by the street, and then distributed throughout the home by your home plumbing. Those, in older homes, some of those components, fixtures, and even the sodders that they use to connect those fixtures together contained lead. So particularly in older homes, lead can be a concern. And then I think it was nineteen eighty-six was when there was, lead was officially banned from plumbing components. But many, many homes were built before that and then plumbed before that and still have their old plumbing components. Thankfully, not many in Troutdale, few, very few. So we are fortunate here in Troutdale. Number one, we're, we have a, what I like to say is we have relatively young infrastructure, which is good for us in many ways. One of those ways is that many of the homes in Troutdale were built, you know, in the last few decades. And much of our infrastructure was built in the last few decades. And we are fortunate that we do not have elevated levels of lead in our water. We've had a very good track record with our monitoring and what we found in our, in our water and in water customers' faucets. So we are under what's called a reduced sampling regimen now, where we don't have to sample as much as some other places. Right now, every three years, we have to monitor thirty qualifying homes. These are homes that meet certain screening criteria based on their type and age of construction, where they might be more prone to having lead in their system. So every three years, we have to round up thirty willing volunteer customers that are willing to work with us and to collect samples in their homes, which they, we actually work with them to collect the samples themselves. And then we perform the lab analysis on those to maintain compliance with our lead sampling requirements. As I said, we're on this reduced sampling regimen because we've always had low levels of lead in our monitoring overall, overall of that sampling. And then we went back, how far, David, in our recent kind of look back?
The recent one, back to two thousand eight, I believe.
Two thousand eight.
All the way back to ninety-one, we have data.
Right. In the ten. So we pulled data back from, going back to two thousand eight. And of all the sampling we did in that time, we only found very few instances of individual samples that very slightly exceeded the, the lead concentration. So we had a very, very good record with our, our copper and lead sampling. Now, those rules have been around for a long time, as I mentioned, but progress marches on. Science gets better, technology gets better, testing methods get better, and people become more aware of concerns with some of these elements in their water. And we've particularly seen media attention on places like Flint, Michigan, where they have had major, major issues, concerns with it. And that has led to, over the last several years, EPA working with many science industry partners to promulgate new lead and copper rules. And that's what prompted us to come talk to you tonight. Those rules were finalized in October, which coincided with the due date for our lead and copper line inventory, which we completed and submitted on time to, to our State Primacy Agency. We sent, we basically, through a combination of methods, validated the service line material of our roughly forty-nine hundred residential service lines. And when I say residential in this context, I'm talking about service lines that are less than two-inch diameter. That's what the rule covered because practically all residential service lines are less than two-inch diameter. And I'm happy to report that we found that, we proved what we believed already to be true, that Troutdale has no lead service lines in our system, not one. So we are very happy about that. That not only is good for our customers, good for the health of our community, but also means there are a lot less requirements that we have to worry about in this rule that would be triggered if we did have any. As this rule's come out, it's gotten some media attention, and it may start, get people asking questions and starting to wonder, okay, well, what about our water system? And there are a few points that we want to make share with you that pretty much everybody in the industry agrees on as sort of the key points when you have constituents that may be concerned about this. First being the water that we need to be prepared and to communicate and remind them of our commitment to protecting the community from lead in our drinking water, which we are very committed to and which David and his staff worked very hard to ensure. We can remind them that we have, we have inventoried all of our residential service lines that are less than two-inch diameter and found no lead service lines. We have neither found galvanized service lines requiring replacement, which would be a galvanized line downstream of a lead gooseneck. We have no lead goosenecks, as far as we know. And we don't have any lead status unknown service lines. So in some cases, in this inventory process, you can generate service lines that for one reason or another, you say, well, we don't know, we just don't know what it is. We don't have any of those either. We've inventoried them all, and we know they're not lead. So that survey's done. It took a lot of work by David and his staff, coordinating with other staff, to get that completed. And we're very happy to have that behind us. There are many layers to this rule, though, and we're watching some of those key requirements. For us, those would be, because they can vary depending on the size of your water system. For our water system, one of the very key factors that we are being mindful of is they have lowered the lead action level from point one five milligrams per liter down to point one zero. That's a significant reduction. And for folks that aren't used to dealing in those kinds of numbers, yes, take it from me, that matters, that's, that's an important reduction. So what that means is that the threshold is lower now. So where we, you know, we or others might have had monitoring or sampling that was well, was under the threshold previously, now it might be, it could be exceeding. I will say that, again, doing that look back that we did, I think we had barely a handful of, of instances of samples that would have exceeded the, the monitoring threshold, even at its lower level. So we still feel very confident about the quality of our water as it pertains to lead and copper. But another really important one we want you to all be aware of is the required community, twenty-four hour, community-wide notification if a lead action level is exceeded. That was not in the previous rule, that's there now. And with the lower action level, that means the chances of a water system exceeding the threshold, triggering that action level, are greater. So while we're pretty confident that that's not going to happen in the foreseeable future in Troutdale, things can change over time. And I can't rule out the possibility we might not have an exceedance of that notification threshold, in which case, we would issue a notification to the entire community. It would be by various media, our city newsletter, our website, our social media. We would do press releases to radio and television news. So the word would get out fast, that's the intent, they want everyone to know quickly. And it could cause a lot of worry, potentially even panic, because people have seen stories about these other cities where people have major, major problems. So the important thing to remember is if that does occur, what we're really talking about is an exceedance at maybe a few homes that are associated with those individual homes. This was very contentious during the rulemaking process because we have, of course, water industry professionals, large systems out there saying, you're going to make us notify the entire community about an issue with a few homes that's really stemming from those particular homes, not from the water system itself. And it's going to cause everyone to freak out, you know? But that is the rule they settled on, and so that's what we will do if we were to have exceedance of that threshold. So it's important to remember that if that occurs, and you start seeing it on our social media and on our webpage and hearing it on the radio, that what we're really talking about is a few specific homes and that it's isolated to those few specific homes, almost certainly. And if we do that, we, in fact, every time we do copper and lead monitoring in someone's home, we share the results with them, we tell them the implications of the results that we get from their, from their sampling. And if there's anything there for concern, we give them recommendations on what they can do to mitigate. So if, if we did have an exceedance, if there was a community-wide notification, you can tell people, if the water department hasn't contacted you directly, you really probably don't have anything to worry about. Because if you did, they'd be talking to you directly because it's really, it's really about a few individual homes. Another element of the rule that is challenging, and, and some of it is an existing challenge, as I sort of alluded to earlier, is that every three years, we have to get thirty willing volunteers to let us take samples from their, their faucets. And we offer various incentives to try to encourage people to do that, but it is a challenge and a struggle every time. There's only about, we think, forty to sixty homes in town that even meet the screening criteria for sampling. So getting thirty of them to, to play ball with us voluntarily is not always easy, but we've managed to do it so far. One of the new elements in this rule is that we are going to have to conduct sampling at schools and daycare facilities and similar type facilities. And that begins in twenty twenty-seven, and we have five years to sample all of them. We have to do about twenty percent per year. And we expect that will be as or more challenging to get cooperation from those facilities as it is to get residents, because they are very busy with their curriculums and doing their daycare things and taking care of kids. And they don't really have time to accommodate our needs to come in and do sampling at their facilities. At least, they don't feel so. So I guess we would ask, maybe this is one way where the council could help us a little bit if you're talking to folks that run a school or a daycare, and you get the opportunity to let them know, hey, when the water department comes asking, please work with them, cooperate with them, so that we can meet our, our monitoring and testing requirements under the federal law and the state requirements. So I'll just wrap up by saying the main thing is for you to be aware of, these regulations have been changing, and that there's a new rule that's been finalized recently, that there are some, several new requirements associated with it, lower action levels, a twenty-four hour notification, community-wide, if we have even an isolated threshold exceedance. And that if that occurs, to remember, if someone calls you with concerns, if we haven't talked to them directly, it's, it's probably not related to their home. We're always happy to answer any questions. Of course, we'll be happy to answer the questions you have about it tonight. And we're always happy to answer any questions the council or any Troutdale water customer or citizen has about our water and the water we deliver to them. They're welcome to contact us by email, by phone, come visit us at our office. We answer questions like that all the time. We'll have, you'd be surprised, all the crazy questions people come up with. And we answer them quite frequently. So please don't hesitate, if anybody has any questions or concerns, feel free to reach out to us. And if, if someone asks you a question about our water system that you don't know the answer to, then of course, we don't hesitate to refer them to us, and we'll be happy to talk to them. There is one part that I realized I glossed over a little bit that I wanted to jump back to quickly, and that is on the, the action level exceedance. I wanted to give a little bit more detail on that. Well, I mentioned that the action level reduced from point one five to point one zero milligrams per liter. That is, if you have that exceedance in ten percent or more of your sampled homes, so it's not just one home. So that would trigger the twenty-four hour notification. So when we go out and sample thirty homes, if we just had one isolated home on its own, that would not trigger it. It would basically need to be three or four in the same sampling round, which is due to my report. So with that, I guess I'd like to just open it up for any questions you may have or anything you'd like to ask myself or David, clarifications you might.
Questions from the council? Well, I think you answered all of mine. So it would take, it would take three or four of the sampled homes exceeding point oh one oh milligrams per liter to note to trigger.
That's right.
Well, that's something, anyway. All right, well, good. If there's... No, we, we don't actually vote on anything, but I'll go ahead and open it. If there's no questions from the council, I'll invite any public questions from, let's start with Zoom. Any questions from the public to Travis or David? And not seeing any, any questions from anyone in the room regarding this. Yes, Rich?
If you'd be willing to take a public comment from non-agenda items at some point?
I hadn't, we, we invited public comment, Rich, at the beginning of the meeting for non-agenda items. So, I mean, I, yes, go ahead.
I think I know what it's in regard to, and I was planning on bringing it up under council concerns. If it's about parking on Kendall, is that why you folks are here?
Anyway, we're, let's stick with this agenda item for now, and that's a fair enough question. We'll, we'll see if that, if you're satisfied, anyway.
I do have one question.
Yes, go ahead, John.
So daycares and schools, you just take one sample, or do you have to take multiple samples?
I'm pretty certain it's going to be multiple samples, but I don't know the exact answer to that yet.
I was trying to figure out why it's such a hassle if you just come and get one sample, but if you have to go around and get multiple samples.
Well, one of the challenges is that your water has to be stagnant or not flushed for up to six hours or minimum of six hours. So that can be somewhat challenging for a school if you're not, you know, the first person there. It's somewhat of a challenge for residents as well. And to be frank, I mean, these days, oftentimes, the challenge is just getting them to call you back or respond in the first place to really get the ball rolling. Right. Right.
Well, it sounds like you've managed so far, but let's.
So far. Our incentives may have to get a little better, but.
Yeah, I have an old house, and I don't recall ever being asked. I certainly would have.
Well, we will, we'll check back against our screening criteria, and you may get a call.
Oh, goodie. Yes, that's great. No, that's okay. Hey, if there's no other questions or comments, yes, we have somebody. If you have a question, or David or Travis?
Yeah, I, I'm assuming you're here.
Why don't you come up and identify yourself for the record?
Okay. Welcome there. Hi, Brenda, nice to meet you. I walked in late after you guys were speaking here.
That's all right. Just state your, state your name and the city where you live.
Hi, my name is Brenda. I recently moved to the Troutdale area. I am in the Cherry Park Ridge area.
You're in Troutdale?
Yes.
Brenda?
Dejesus, D-E-J-E-S-U-S. Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. So my question would be, because I recently moved to an apartment, and so I buy bottled water because I don't trust the water system. How would you guys go about, like, testing apartments? Because today we had a water shut down for, like, four hours. And then when the water turned on, it was brown, but then it cleared back up. So that's my question.
Well, inside of a private plumbing like that, the city's responsibility is that the meter in most cases, lead and copper rule is the only exception. And that apartment complex likely will qualify against the requirements too.
Okay.
Now, however, that doesn't forbid the apartment owner to do his own standing. In that case, we would encourage you and your neighbors to advocate with your property manager.
Okay.
To come back to their business and you guys feel.
Perfect. Yeah, that was my question.
All right. Well, that's a good one. Because who wants brown water coming out of the town?
Yeah, that was a little weird today. Yeah, and very inconvenient. Yeah, because I had to leave, find something to do, so the water turned back on. Okay.
All right. Well, thank you. Anyone else in the room? Yes, please come up.
I'm a city mom, and I live in Troutdale, Oregon. My question for you guys is, how old do the houses have to be to fall into your test category? And how are you finding those people that you're asking? Are you just kind of drawing an address out of the house for the little houses you have that are that old? That's my question.
So to answer your question, it has to be pre-86, pre-1986 buildings. So, and have copper plumbing with light solder. And originally, those homes were selected by physically staff prior to being, physically went out and scraped lead solder from pipe to have it tested to be sure that the home qualified. So it has to be a specific criteria, that's my question.
All right. Anybody else? Okay. Well, hey, you have a comment? Yes, go ahead.
No, I just wanted to thank you for that report. And I think Troutdale has some of the best water around. So we're very fortunate in this city. It comes from an ancient, these guys could tell you more, but it's ancient aquifer that comes off, off Mountain Hood. It takes a long time for that water to end up down here where we're actually pumping out in our wells. I've toured the facility and saw the whole thing. We don't have fluoride or, we're required to do some things, but it's very minimal what occurs with our water. So it's some of the best, right?
Well, we certainly.
I don't buy bottled water.
Yeah, we certainly agree. And we think groundwater is a fantastic source. It's also a high mineral content. And it doesn't present any problems that some of these water sources have to deal with. So we're very happy with our waters. Certainly, a part of that is having access to a fantastic resource, like the aquifer that we have, as well as the artwork of David, his crew, his advisors, and all the resources we have. I agree. Thank you as well.
Okay. Well, thank you, Travis Holton, David Schaper. Appreciate it. We'll move on to agenda item number six, which is a motion determining an application process to fill a council vacancy, a trunky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations on your election. The, as everyone heard, when former councillor Ripma was sworn in, he simultaneously resigned his council position. And the charter, as is attached to the packet, says that when a councillor resigns, a vacancy is created. The vacancy should be filled by city council. And there is no specific system for doing that. But in the past, what council has done is taken applications for a couple of weeks. I think one time it went a month, but that turned out to be a little too long for the process. And the people then, they submit applications, they are reviewed by council, and then interviews are conducted, typically in this room before or at a meeting. And then the council discusses it, the pros and cons of the different interviewees, and then nominations are made, and the, a vote is taken to fill the vacancy. In the packet is a timeline that's suggested and an application form that I believe is the same that has been used in the past. And the timeline goes like this. There's one typo in it. It says, today is the 14th, the vacancy was created. Tomorrow, on motion, the public notice would be given on the city's website. And applications can be then picked up and would be due by January 31st. That's a Friday. The packet says 30, but, January 30, but it makes more sense to go to Friday at 5:00. Would be delivered to Sarah Skraw, the city recorder. And then, let's see, by February 6th, the city recorder would send out copies to all of the councillors who could then start to review them. And on February 11th, the people would be encouraged to come and attend an interview here with council. Council would interview folks, discuss, and then fill the vacancy. So the appropriate thing to do would be to, for someone to make a motion to fill the council position that's vacant, using the timeline suggested, but changing January 30 to 31st, and to adopt the form as the approved form to be submitted by the 31st at 5:00 PM to the city recorder. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Anybody have questions? There isn't an actual draft motion.
No, no, there's not a draft motion. It's just, it's typically been done pretty informally in the past.
Right. The motion would be to adopt the.
The timeline and the form.
The timeline to fill the vacancy, and then make use of the application form, exhibit B in the packet.
Still moved. Changing the date to the 31st.
All right. Is there a second?
I could do that. I'll second.
Thank you. Okay. I think I will pause a moment and invite public comment before we vote. And so let me start off with the particip, the public participating on Zoom. Does anyone have any comment or question about this process?
I do, or.
Yes, go ahead.
Paul O'Coax, Troutdale. I'm going to do a little bit of editing here after the swearing in, so I think I can get it together here. First off, I wanted to correct some factual errors in the staff report under background. Councillor Ripma was sworn in as a councillor in January 2023, not 2022. He filed by fee to be a major, be a mayoral candidate on July 16th, 2024, early summer, not fall. And secondly, this is where my adjustment, quick adjustments had to occur. I had taken issue with the proposed transition process for Mr. Ripma to go from councillor to mayor. However, he did resign, as I had requested. And then I go on to say, an application, or an applicable city charter statement would be, quote, "An elective office of the city shall be deemed vacant before the expiration of the term, upon the incumbents taking the oath of office of another elective government office," unquote. Problem is, that's the language from Gresham City Charter. There was no similar language in the Troutdale City Charter. Then my adjustment went on to say resignation, or let's see, resignation was the most straightforward route. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. And the staff report with the date of my, beginning of my term can be corrected, but that will not affect the motion on the floor. The proposal to change the charter is not before us right now, but it's, you know, Paul, you read these things carefully, and we appreciate it. We'll take it up in due course, perhaps. Let me invite anyone else on Zoom who wish to comment before we vote. Otherwise, I will invite public comment from the room. Anyone in the room wish to comment on this before we vote? We're voting on the procedure to fill the vacancy on council. All right, hearing nothing? Any other comment or questions from the council?
Yeah. Do we need to set at which council meeting we will do the interviews and vote to elect?
I thought that was in here.
It says February 11th applicants are interviewed, discussed, and the vacancy.
It does say on that date.
It is part of the timeline.
It just didn't say it in the motion. So I just want to make sure that it's there, and we're gonna, okay, perfect.
It is included in the motion, because the motion wants to adopt that timeline.
Okay.
Good question. Anyone else? All right. Sarah, go ahead.
Councillor One?
Yes.
Mayor Ripma?
Yes.
Councillor White?
Yes.
Councillor Davidson?
Yes.
Councillor Lini?
Yes.
And Councillor Allen?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. We move on to a resolution approving the city's financial statements, an annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2024, and accepting the independent auditor's report. Eric?
Well, you thought lead and copper rules were exciting. You got, can't wait for this item. So anyway, congratulations to Mr. Mayor and to the councillors newly elected and reelected. My name is Eric Mueller. I'm the Finance Director for the city. What this item is for you tonight is, as continuing councillors know, tends to be a process recount of what's occurred. It can be generally deemed as boring, but as I've said in years past, you want boring audit reports. If they're exciting, there's generally a problem. So but much of what I'll cover tonight is basically to put it on the record of what has occurred, what the auditors are presenting. Because it's a, one of the ways that the council demonstrates its oversight of the fiscal affairs of the city, one of your oversight responsibilities, the sort of the complement, the complement to the budget process, which is another way where you exercise your oversight of the city finances. So in any case, the item in your packet begins on page 66 of the, of the packet, but it's the staff report for the annual comprehensive financial report for the last fiscal year, which ended June 30th, 2024. It's, as I said, is to demonstrate the council's oversight of the fiscal affairs of the city. The auditor's role as an independent auditor is, their role is to express an opinion, whereas management is responsible for preparing the financial statements and for having them reviewed by the auditors. As I mentioned in the staff report, there's essentially five components. There's the annual comprehensive report, which is the 160-some-odd pages. The audit opinion letter, which is included inside there, the management letter, which is typically an addition, the independent auditor's report for the State of Oregon regulation, which is an additional obligation, and then the auditor's required communications to the governing body. So the annual comprehensive financial report, again, is the largest component in the packet there. The city has, for the past 34 years, pursued preparing the annual comprehensive financial report, and have, have achieved the certificate of excellence from the Government and Finance Officers Association. We've submitted the application for the coming years, this report's review. Typically, we hear back in the summer after the review's done. I have all expectation that we will have accomplished it for 35th year. It's due to a lot of work day in, day out by the finance staff. I may be the messenger, but it's the hard work that they do day in, day out, following the process and procedure, and ensuring that we have good audit trails and documentation. The, much of what is included in the annual comprehensive financial report beyond just the basic financial statements, we do as a way to demonstrate and provide and maintain compliance with our, what is known as our continuing disclosure requirements for our publicly issued debt. In each of the bond issues and loan documents that the council approves, there's generally a list of additional criteria and information that's required to be disclosed on a periodic basis for the debt holders to be able to monitor, not just the strictly the financial statements, but the greater perspective on the nature of the debt issuer and their, and their health. So much of the additional schedules are to help preserve that, which keeps us in compliance with the municipal debt regulatory board, as well as the credit review agencies such as Moody's, who review our debt. The audit opinion letter, which is numbered as page one of the reports, page 88 in the packet, but it is a, is the audit opinion letter, where it is, most of the rest of the package is officially from the city and from the Finance Director. That letter page is actually theirs. You know, I don't have the quote, the ability to edit that, which you wouldn't want to, but it is, it is their opinion letter, and it's, we received again this year, a, what is referred to as a unmodified opinion, also known as a clean opinion with no reservations from the auditors. There's a long, detailed kind of statement of the, the nature of the testing that they performed and their role and scope. But the salient points are that, quote, "In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects. The respective financial position of the city in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America." So that's essentially, in a nutshell, what is, what equals a, quote, "clean opinion." Management letter is generally a, is referred to as the terminology. It's auditing standards board, auditing standard statement 115, communicating internal control-related matters identified in an audit. Management letter is the more commonly used term. Again, this year, we were, the auditors found no basis from a control standpoint to issue an audit letter. So I don't have one to present to you, because they found no issues necessary to present. SAS 115 refers to not significant deficiencies, which are the lowest, intermediate, which are significant deficiencies, and most serious material weaknesses. The city had no deficiencies observed in any of those three categories. The next component is the municipal audit law. These are. The next component is the municipal audit law. These are additional requirements that the state legislature has passed, that the Oregon Secretary of State's office is responsible for monitoring through their audit division and require report of. It's page 116 of the report, page 230 of the overall packet, but it lists through a whole list of minimum standards for audits of Oregon Minister of Corporations, where the auditors have to go through and check for the deposit of public funds, indebtedness limitations and calculations. They check the nature of the budget and whether it was adopted and the process and procedure was properly followed. Look at the insurance and fidelity bonds. One of the things they test in particular is what's referred to as highway revenues, where they're ensuring that the revenue received from the state from the share of the gas tax money, that it is indeed used for highways and street activity and not used for parks maintenance or operating the water utility, one of the many compliance items that they check for. There's a number of other items that they will check through, looking at our purchasing and procurement process through a test process, and the schedule of accountability of elected officials, which we generally don't have anything on that schedule. They did note this year that there was one exception that they noted as part of their testing, and it was the excess of expenditures over appropriations, which means we overspent the budget line. Make reference to it on page 230, as well as 130 in the notes. The expenditure was related to an expenditure of over the budget in the materials and services category of $48,706 in the street fund. And that resulted from a late invoice from the vendor doing some of the street repair work that was done in May, which they got it to us in late July and was paid in August. The challenge being is that it was $103,000, which made it material. And the auditors then felt as though that needed to be accrued back into the prior year's financial statements. Since I didn't know about this statement until well after the council approved the year-end budget adjustments at the end of June, I didn't have you included in any of those adjustments. So, rather than being some $55,000 under budget, which is what I had anticipated, we ended up being 48 over in that category. As I noted in the staff report, the street fund was more than $1.6 million under budget. It's just that particular subcategory didn't have the right amount of money in it and therefore violated the requirement. The auditors made note of it from a compliance standpoint, but really as a technical violation rather than a substantive one. The expenditure was for the appropriate use of the street revenues for the appropriate purpose and was procured appropriately. It just didn't have the right amount in that particular budget bucket. And then the last category or component of the overall report is the auditor's communication with the governing body, SAS 114. It's included in your packet as Exhibit B. They do issue that every year, unlike the management letter. And they go through and restate again that they didn't issue a management letter, that there was no basis, no need for them to do so. They again reiterate that it was a clean opinion. They touch on the various other items that they have to look at related to qualitative practices, difficulties in the course of the audit, uncorrected misstatements, disagreements with management, management's estimates and representations, other findings, the supplementary information that's provided as part of the overall package. And their conclusion was that there were no deficiencies observed. You know, that's about as high praise as you get from the auditors. They won't ever say that you do a good job. They just didn't find you making any errors. And then they touched briefly on the coming standards that will affect the city. The GASB 101, compensated absences, became effective for this current fiscal year that we're in now. And there's a GASB 102, certain risk disclosures, that I believe becomes effective the beginning of next fiscal year. Both of these will impact the city from a reporting standpoint and probably a compliance and cost standpoint for the auditor, from the auditors doing the testing. In summary, this entire package puts on the record essentially the council's oversight of the financial activities of the city, what the dispersment of public funds and the compliance with the regulations that occurred. As I mentioned, each year when we come to this is that the resolution that's crafted does not approve the audit opinion letters. It does approve the financial statements, so they are the official financial statements of the city, but rather it only accepts the auditor's report letters because it's their professional opinion and their opinion stands whether it's approved or not by the client. So, with that, if I haven't put everybody thoroughly to sleep, I'm happy to answer any questions regarding the component there. And the new councillors were warned that there's a quiz at the end, right?
Any questions from the council? All right. Well, thank you, Eric. I don't have any questions either. Before we, there is a resolution for us to consider. Before we do that, let me invite public comment. Oh, that was a public comment. They invite public comment. No, I appreciate the reminder. You never know. Let's start with the public on Zoom. Anyone have any comment, question regarding the resolution that's before us? Seeing none, anyone in the room have any question or comment on the resolution before Seeing none, if there's no other questions, I would entertain a motion. Yes, Glenn, go ahead.
I move approval of the city's financial statement and annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2024, and accepting the independent auditor's report.
Reports.
Oh, reports.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? All right. Sarah?
Councillor One?
Yes.
Mayor Rittman?
Yes.
Councillor White?
Yes.
Councillor Davidson?
Yes.
Councillor Leamy?
Yes.
And Councillor Allen?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Eric. Very good. Moving on to staff communications, right? Anything?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Number one, don't forget, next week on Tuesday, we have a URA meeting. It should not be a long meeting, but we have to do the same thing you just did on the audit, because that's a separate agency. And I'll give a short report on the status of things going on in the Urban Renewal Agency. Since you're all council members, you're officially a member of the board of the Urban Renewal District. So, we'll see you next Tuesday night. Second of all, as are all government agencies, next Monday, we will be closed on our Martin Luther King. So, all the city offices will be closed next Monday. Thirdly, this is kind of a warning. There are certain committees in the region with Metro, with the county, with other agencies, that historically we have filled with members of the council. They wanted an elected official from Troutdale represented, such as the last couple of years, Mayor Rittman has been on the Water Safety Board, representing the city of Troutdale. So, I will be getting that list together for the mayor under the ordinance. The mayor is responsible to appoint council members to that. He usually asks first, but don't be surprised if you're asked if you're interested in serving on a committee. There's, I think, only like four or five. And now that we have several new council members, and you can't all say the person who's not here, which will be selected in February, okay? That can't be your default. So, just know that we will be, you'll be asked about that in the next couple of weeks. Number four, the Boy Scouts, excuse me, the Cub Scouts, a Weebloos unit that meets in Troutdale would like an elected official to come talk to them about all the exciting things you do at one of their meetings on a Monday night. So, if you're interested, you don't have to volunteer now, but if you're interested, just send me an email, as I'd be open to talking to them. And the first person who sends me an email wins. So, give me the details. If you send me an email, say you're interested. And finally, Mayor, just a suggestion, that council comments are made first by the returning council members, so the three newbies know what the heck that agenda item's all about.
Well, all right.
Or have fun and pick them first. It's up to you.
No, fortunately, for council communications, we start with returning councillor one. And I'll weigh in if I have something. And then councillor White. So, the rest of you can just follow along. Council communications is not mandatory. If you have something you want to announce, though, or communicate to the public, this is the chance to do it. Anyway, councillor one, would you like to start off?
Sure. People have to listen to you, which is great. Just welcome, everybody, the new or newly elected officials to the council up here at these hot lights. And welcome to new Mayor Rittman, to tens of people on the early the cable site watching us right now. So, just excited about a new year and excited to work with everybody and to see what we can accomplish. And I'm getting more and more excited for summer because I'm tired of the cold weather, so.
All right, thank you. I also welcome, this wasn't so bad, was it, to the, anyway, welcome back to our returning councillors, one and White, and new councillors Davidson, Allen, and Leamy. We'll just keep going on it. And with that, I think I'll pass it off to councillor White. I will say, if councillor, there was some sort of signal going on, but Rich, if there is, talking to members of the public out there, Rich, Allen, if Glenn doesn't cover what you want, I would entertain letting you make a non-agenda comment.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
So, go for it.
Yeah, I'm excited with this team. I think we're gonna work well together. I'm really excited for the prospects to come. I think Rich was trying to intervene. I think the owners of the old pub are here, is that right? And they did not know our procedure. They're busy running the business. So, it might be helpful if we could make an exception and allow them to speak briefly. Otherwise, I read the email. I could possibly cover it. So, your call, Mayor. No, we don't normally do that.
Well, it's definitely out of order. So, it's not something you're comfortable covering?
Well, I have limited information, but I think it's in regard to the parking on Kendall with the construction.
I could allow an out-of-order, public comment is usually the first thing at a meeting, and we start at seven. So, but with the consent of the council, I will allow them to come forward out of order and just let, why don't you do it now? Don't know. Just, next time, come at seven or a little before.
We were here. We just didn't realize.
We missed a public park.
Oh. So, I've been emailing back and forth with a couple of different members. We came to the city planner meeting on Wednesday, and we're told this was the meeting we needed to come to. I've talked with Erica Palmer, and she, our biggest problem right now is we understand that you guys have future situations to deal with, public parking that's going on in Troutdale, but we also understand that's two to three years out. So, we're just kind of concerned of what's gonna be happening now. Right now, we're just getting decimated by this construction parking. They're parking up and down the street. We have no room for our customers. We're losing hundreds of dollars a day. And we're wondering if there's any way to do a two-hour parking limit, if there's any way to find these guys a spot that they can park to open up the street parking for our customers, because not only that, the Wayfinder, which is fine, we understand business, that's eaten part of our parking as well, and unfortunately only have street parking available. Erica did mention in an email that she sent five days ago, that she was gonna talk to the construction company about them parking perhaps somewhere else. I don't know where that somewhere else was. That was a little unclear, but there's still no change as of today. Like, we get there to open up at 10 o'clock, and there's nowhere to park already. Now, we've made a deal with people that currently own the old gas station down there, that they'll allow us to park there, us being our staff, while it's empty. But we also understand that place is for sale. So, that's gonna go away at some point. So, we're just wondering if there's any short-term solution to our issue, because it's--
Well, and it's, yeah, and it's not only hurting us. We've talked with multiple business owners in the area, the different salons and restaurants as well, that it's affecting their parking for their clientele as well.
Yeah. So, we're just wondering if there's anything on the agenda to fix it in the immediate future. We're also concerned about the summer when we have the press Friday events and stuff going on. All the overflow parking is right here where the construction's going up now, so we're not sure if that's gonna impact us. And those are some of our biggest days as well.
Tourism.
Yeah. So, we're just curious if there's anything going on, anything that we can know about.
All right. Well, during the public comment, we usually don't try to resolve something, but is Ray and Steph on to this?
The ordinance doesn't apply to me. It's just, as council's not supposed to. Thank you for coming tonight. First of all, we understand your problem. We knew this was gonna be an issue when Home Forward was approved. For long-term changes in downtown, we're waiting until people actually move in to see what the problem is. They don't want to come up with a solution. They'd be wrong. But we definitely understand the issue, and we talk about it often. A couple of things. One is Erica has prepared, can't read it from where you're sitting, I understand that, but this is a draft memo that we're putting out to everybody doing construction work and getting permits to work downtown, identifying the problem and asking them not to create a problem around businesses like that and to park other places and have other people walk over. So, we are doing that, putting up signs for two-hour on the streets. I will talk to Public Works tomorrow to see if that's something. I think I can do that under the city ordinance myself, just make that change. And we just have to order signs, which make a couple of weeks to get there. We also, that's number two, yeah, we will, I will check on that one. Number three is, we are just finishing a downtown parking study. And even though the construction of Home Forward and all the crud going on on Buxton are both temporary, it's still an immediate problem for you. And so, we do have a parking study coming up, talking about parking problems in Troutdale and solutions. So, we're doing those. And after the meeting, if you had a few minutes for me, I have another suggestion I'd like to make offline.
Okay.
So, anyway, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
And I love your place.
Thank you.
They're leaving twice with this crazy guy, every month.
Appreciate you guys giving us--
Yeah, we appreciate your business and talk to Ray.
Okay.
And thanks, that really--
We recognize a lot of faces in there, by the way. We appreciate your business. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, thanks. We'll return to councillor concerns. Glenn, did you have any?
Yeah, you know, they weren't the only ones. I got some calls and emails from other businesses. And it seems to me that that location has enough room, that they're kind of using the street as a lay-down yard. You know, they're parking dump trucks and equipment, because it makes it easier for them, but they're really hurting the surrounding businesses. So, if they could, I think they've got enough land. They need to gravel a section of land off and use that for a staging area. And the good news is that when that thing is finished, there's gonna be a new parking lot just south of the old pub. So, that'll be a permanent fix, hopefully. But anyway, and then I wanted to congratulate our staff on winning the wrapping paper and tape challenge for Christmas. It was used to wrap gifts that the police officers hand out to less fortunate kids. So, good job to our staff on that. And then, lastly, I heard from someone that's on our fire negotiation team, the letter was sent to Gresham Fire from the three city managers. And I would just like to get a copy of that letter.
That's for Ray.
Okay. I think we need to see it. Some of the committee members were a little upset that they didn't get us proofread or see that letter beforehand. So, that's all I have.
We'll catch Ray in a little bit. Okay, Jesse?
I do not have anything to add.
All right.
Thank you.
That's understandable. Thank you. John?
I just look forward to working together in the next four years, two years to four years.
Excellent. All right, thank you. Carol?
I just look forward to working with you all and seeing what we can accomplish.
All right. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed?
I guess I can finish.
Nobody opposed. We are adjourned.